I love fresh and spoiled. We do not like cake. I'll just close it. Okay, I'm finished. And I'm gonna take it. Don't win is better. Yeah, well, actually, first, the problem. And the thing is, I'm happy. Down the road. It was good. I'm gonna give you the door. Door's here. I've got to be mean. That's me now.
Well, since you got the meeting order on the nineteenth of October, if you have a cell phone, please turn it off. Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, which is a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Mr. Dinkelman, would you be the role, please?
Councilmember Carter. Ray Smith.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Biker.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
And your assistant.
Here.
Chief of Liberty says that Ms. Charlotte Bart's out last night. But is she able to? So Ms. Bart is not remote there. She participated tonight.
Can you hear me? Can you? Okay.
First item is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Are there any corrections, changes, or deletions to the agenda, of course? Just to make sure everyone has the revised agenda, which includes a second presentation this evening by Ms. Shawna Gamble, Cowan County Opportunities and Let Abatement. No corrections or changes? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. First item is presentation recognition. Uh, first, this week's nineteen audit presentation, manner. Chief Dip is our acting city manager this evening.
Mute myself and start my video. All right. Looks like I'm in. Can everybody see me and hear me?
Good.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. Oh, well, good evening. Bill Tucker from Manor Casterson here tonight to present to you the audited financial statements from June thirtieth. I'm sorry, geez. My, my dates are off, December thirty first, two thousand nineteen. So I know it's been a little while since we've actually finished the audit. Probably, we actually finished the audit in late June. Issued that and then trying to be getting on the agenda for the board meetings over the last couple of months. So glad that it finally was able to work out. As mentioned, Bill Tucker from Mayor Casterson. I do have an audit presentation here for you tonight that I would like to share my screen with you. So I'll try to do that right now as well. So I do have an audit presentation outline that I put together for you. And the host has disabled the participants sharing the screen. I don't know if that can be turned on where I'd be able to share my screen with you.
Yes, just saying.
Okay, thank you. As I can't go through, I'll just kind of continue to talk. Do want to, do want to thank your, your, obviously, your team there at, at the city for all their hard work during our audit process this year. Our audit was, you know, hundred percent remote as we did our entire amount of our fieldwork during the state home order. Our fieldwork started in, in March and then continued on as, as we kind of, you know, went in through our audit process. So again, you know, really thanks a lot to them for all their hard work on getting things uploaded to our portal and then being available for questions and everything like that as the audit process went on. Obviously, it's a little bit different of doing an audit or any work like that remotely. But we really do appreciate everybody's hard work on that. All right. I am able to share my screen now, so I will share this audit presentation outline with you. Okay. So as mentioned, I did put together a presentation outline. Love council members probably have seen me present before in the past and have seen a similar presentation like this in the past as well. So what I'm going to start with, the first page I'm going to turn to is relates to the independent auditors report. So this is an overview of that independent auditors report that can be page, found on pages one and two of the financial statements. The purpose of an audit is to provide an opinion as to the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It's not to detect fraud. It's not to give you opinion on your internal controls. Within the independent auditors reports, we're providing our opinion on your financial statements. We're actually giving out our opinion on the eleven opinion units of the city. Those eleven opinion units are the governmental activities, business type activities, aggregate discreetly presenting component units, each major fund, which are seven major funds in the current year. Those were the general fund, LBN trust, major streets, Maple Grove apartments, M dot street construction, and the sewer and water funds. And then the last opinion unit is that aggregate remaining fund information. Our providing unmodified or clean opinions on all eleven of those opinion units. And that's the best opinion you can receive on your financial statements, meaning that everything is in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Right, from there, I'm going to turn to the next page in the outline, which is the governmental funds balance sheet. The governmental funds balance sheet is a snapshot of your assets, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources, and fund balance at December thirty first, two thousand nineteen. I'm on, on this page in the governmental funds, we'd like to focus on your general fund, which is the far left column and is the main operating fund of the city as well. In particular, on this page, we also like to look at those, those items that are highlighted there for you. So your total fund balance within your general fund and also the components of your assigned and unassigned fund balances as well. But December thirty first, two thousand nineteen, your total fund balance within your general fund of one million four hundred and thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. With portions of that fund balance are considered to be non-spendable for such things as prepaid expenses. So those non-spendable component matches up with the prepaid expenses up there under assets because those dollars have already been spent out, leaving you with a assigned and unassigned fund balance, the third and fourth number up from the bottom of one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and three dollars that is available for expenditures in future periods. That dollar amount represents approximately twenty seven percent of your annual operating expenses. That percentage is down a little bit compared to two thousand eighteen. But as we kind of go into the next component of the presentation, you will see that your expenses increased a little bit compared to previous year as well, resulting in that difference, that portion of fund balance. What we do look at there for assigned and unassigned fund balance is a minimum. We want to see about fifteen to twenty percent as a minimum sitting in that available for expenditures in future periods. And you guys are sitting at twenty seven percent. So I'm a, a good condition to be at, at December thirty first. Obviously, with things that have gone on with, with the pandemic, obviously, the more fund balance that you have and the more resource that you have available to you, obviously, the better. As we've seen, a lot of things change over the last ten months. All right, moving on from there, I'm going to turn to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for your ended summer thirty first, two thousand nineteen. Again, focusing on that far left column, the general fund. I will start off the top of the page with your total revenues. Uh, yeah, total revenues in two thousand nineteen of four million, four hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. That was an increase of approximately five hundred thousand or twelve point six percent compared to two thousand eighteen. And the main fluctuations that we saw within your revenues in the current year was your intergovernmental revenues. Your intergovernmental revenues were up about hundred and fifty thousand dollars compared to two thousand eighteen. And the main area result for that was that the public safety received a COPS grant in two thousand nineteen to reimburse for the public liaison officer. That was an increase in, in those revenues. Another fluctuation that we saw within your revenues was your charge for service revenues as those were up about two hundred and forty thousand dollars compared to the previous year. And the reason for that is there is fewer, you know, internal management salaries that were spread across for funds. Instead, the general fund got reimbursed through cards for service account. So we're keeping the expenses more in the general fund and then charging those out to those other funds through, through that charge for service. Moving down the page to your total expenditures, I had total expenditures in two thousand nineteen of four million, four hundred and eighty nine thousand, six hundred and six dollars. That was an increase of approximately six hundred thousand or fifteen point six percent compared to the previous year. Again, as I mentioned, a lot of those, you know, the spread of those management salaries, so a lot of those salaries and wages and fringes stayed in the general fund in two thousand nineteen. Other fluctuations that we saw related to public works, we saw increasing your public work expenditures by about a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars as you received a grant to re-first, resurface working lots as part of the downtown developments projects. And then the other area that we saw fluctuation was your other expenditures. About a hundred and thirty thousand dollars as she has some additional contributions to MERS in the current year. Last item that I wanted to touch on are results for the year within your general fund. Third number up from the bottom, you did see a decrease in your overall fund balance in the dollar amount of sixty six thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. All right, from there, I do have a couple graphs and charts for you, just to give you a visual perspective of some of those same numbers and, and some trends over the years. So this first chart I have for you is a five-year analysis of your general fund revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. As you can see from this chart, really, your fund balance over those last five years has stayed pretty consistent overall. I mean, that the dollar amount that's sitting there in fund balances stayed really pretty consistent. As you can see, that increase in those expenditures in two thousand nineteen, as I mentioned before, resulting in that percentage of fund balance compared to expenses going down a little bit. But overall, very consistent over those, those last couple of years. The next two charts I have for you is the composition of your general fund revenues and expenditures. That top chart is your general fund revenue composition. Making up the largest component of your revenues in the general fund is your intergovernmental revenues at thirty two percent of your total revenues. That would be such things as state revenue sharing. Also, you know, any of those grants that we were talking about would be coming into your intergovernmental revenues. And then the less, next two largest components is your property taxes and your income taxes, both at twenty three percent of your total revenues within the general fund. And then moving down the page to your general fund expenditure detail, the largest component of the pie for your general fund expenditures is your public safety expenditures at fifty one percent of your total expenditures in two thousand nineteen. Next section I have for you is just a good page on the summary of the audit results for two thousand nineteen. The first section that gets into there at the very top of the page relates to your financial statements. So as I mentioned before, we issued that unmodified clean opinion on your all eleven of your opinion units within your financial statements. So that's, like I said, best opinion you can receive on those financial statements. The next section that gets into there relates to your internal control over financial reporting. And we did identify two material weaknesses in your internal control or financial reporting, and I will discuss those in a minute as we kind of go down the page here. But there are two comments below and onto the next page related to those internal control material weaknesses. The next section that we have for you relates to federal awards. So in two thousand nineteen, the city expended greater than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards. Therefore, what is required to have a single audit is what they call it. During a single audit, we go through and, and determine the major programs for those federal awards. In two thousand nineteen, that was your community development block grant was considered be your major program for two thousand nineteen. As we went through the compliance requirements set forth by the federal government for that program, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal controls over that program. So, so good, you know, clean, clean, single audit. Obviously, that's what you're looking for. There's a lot of compliance requirements that are tied to those federal dollars and making sure that you guys are complying with those. And again, as we went through and did our testing on that, we didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in that area. All right. The last items I have for you, as I mentioned, we did have two financial statement findings. The first finding that we have for you is material journal entries that were proposed by the auditors. So the condition is material journal entries for the proper recognition of due from other governmental units or proposed by the auditors. These statements were not detected by the city's internal control or financial reporting. These entries are brought to the attention of management and were subsequently recorded in the city's general ledger. And then the next comment that we have for you, that's labeled two thousand eighteen dash zero zero two relates to internal controls over credit card use. So during our testing of the credit card controls, we noted instances which the city's internal controls were not filed in practice. Specifically during our review of credit card purchases, we noted instances where supporting receipt documents were not retained. Further in discussion with city management, we noted instances where odometer information was not being recorded for gas car purchases. And then finally, city management also was not, was unable to verify the total amount of credit cards they're currently in use. I know for both of these findings, the material journal entries and the internal controls or financial reporting, within the financial statements, there actually is a corrective action plan that has been put together on both of these findings and corrective action and then, and those responsible parties and when those are going to be completed by as well. So both of these, you know, items have, have been looked at by management and, and hopefully are being addressed in the two thousand twenty year. That is the last page of the document I have for you. I will stop sharing my screen and open it up for any questions.
Councilmember has a question. Mr. Tucker. Councilmember Spiker.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, for that very thorough report and audit. I just have, I think, one or two questions with regard to the internal control over the credit card usage. I know that this report is from December twenty nineteen to June of July. Have you, is this the first year that you discovered the credit card discrepancy? Or can you recall if we've had past credit card issues? Because I don't have a recall of being mentioned in the reports that have been on council four years about the credit cards. So I'm just wondering, is this the first year that you guys have discovered this or?
You're muted, Mr. Tucker. You can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. I unmuted myself and then I muted myself just, and then unmuted myself just now, just to see if it would work. So not sure why that happened. But um, if I, I didn't look back right, right as we were talking. But I, I do think that in two thousand eighteen, we did have a credit card use finding as well in two thousand eighteen. I'm not sure going back further than that in two thousand seventeen, if we had one. I don't recall that we did, but I think in two thousand eighteen, we did have a finding related to that similar issue.
Mr. Tucker, would you clarify the period which this audit covered from the start date to the end date?
Yeah, so the start, I mean, the fiscal year that we are auditing is January first, two thousand nineteen through December thirty first, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other council members have questions for Mr. Tucker? Councilwoman Spiker said she felt she had two questions. Do you have another question?
No, I think he, he covered it, but he, he had it eighteen, but he didn't recall any previous year. I just wondered, because I know we had some credit card issues here last year, and I just wondered if that's what stands down, prompted them to look at it? Or have they always looked at it even in the past?
Yeah, I mean, I think through our, you know, our testing that we do for our internal controls. So, so as I mentioned, you know, at the start of the presentation, we don't give an opinion on our, on your internal controls. But we do go through and, and test your internal controls. We look at the documentation and look at your, your processes that are in place. And anytime that we identify a deficiency in those, we do note that. So even in previous years to two thousand eighteen, that's something that we would have gone through and done testing on and looked at those controls that were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Next item is item B, presentation by Shawna Gamble on Cowan County Operations, Reforming, Cowan County Opportunities and Let Abatement.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. So some of you I have spoken to before, I think I came in a couple of years ago when our program first began, just to let you know that the lead abatement program was out there. I work for the city of Battle Creek and we have a lead abatement grant through the Department of Health and Human Services. So it's funded through Medicaid. That grant is for five years. It's one point five million dollars per year. And we just finished up our third year. So with that, we've done, I think, eleven projects have been completed in Albion. We've spent almost five hundred thousand dollars so far. And I think we have five or six projects that are in process right now. And also, I just wanted to remind you about our ability to help with the lead and water protocols that require municipalities to review the service lines. So what our program is able to do in that process is if we have a family that is eligible for our program and we find that there are galvanized pipes and then there, that's a, excuse me, that there's a lead risk in their water, we are able to replace those pipes from the house to the street. And so the other thing we would do is notify the municipality so that you all know, you know, hey, this particular property has this issue and then you can move forward with the protocols that you are required to do. Let's see. Oh, also, we actually were just granted a three point four million dollar grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So our chip grant, which is funded through the state of Michigan through Medicaid, that grant, we are partnering with Community Action Agency to service the entire county. So it's not just the city of Battle Creek. And with the HUD grant, we are also servicing the entire county, not just the city of Battle Creek. And we're partnering with Neighborhoods Inc. in Battle Creek to do the remainder of the county. So obviously, the city of Battle Creek is going to be managed by that municipality and then NIBC will oversee the remainder of the county. And so obviously, I wanted you guys to be aware that, you know, I don't know if you saw press releases. I did email them to you of that opportunity. So the HUD grant is forty two months. And again, that's three million, four hundred thousand dollars. So the three million is for lead abatement specifically. And one of the good things about the HUD grant is we have four hundred thousand dollars to do other healthy homes type remediation. So it could be, you know, removing mold. It could be fixing water heaters and furnaces, those types of things. So we do have that additional funding specifically in this grant for healthy homes types issues. And then lastly, I had spoken to city manager Snyder, gosh, like at the beginning of COVID, she had attended a couple of our lead task force meetings. And one of the main reasons why we were in contact with each other is because we want to discuss a targeted neighborhood project in Albion. So we did one similar in the city of Battle Creek. And basically, we partnered with a couple other organizations to target a high-impact neighborhood specifically on lead abatement. And what we also know is there are often other issues that are going on in people's homes. For whatever reason, they can't, you know, get those things taken care of. And with COVID, it's gotten even worse. We know that. So we've kind of just tossed around the idea of doing that similar thing here in the city of Albion, partnering with EDC, because I've, I've spoken to Amy DePrez a few times too. And then again, COVID hit, so we haven't like worked out any details. And so basically, that would be like working with EDC, working with, directly with the city, working with DDA, Community Foundation, so that we can have other funding available besides just the lead abatement. So if someone needs, I mean, I don't know, something that the lead abatement program doesn't cover. They need a, a water heater or they need a furnace or they need their sidewalks repaired, things like that. And we can have a targeted space to have all of that done. And then again, work together so that the funding is available to do things other than just the lead abatement. And then also, it addresses one of the issues that I've heard being talked about around the city as far as a lot of work being done to create housing that is for an upper income demographic. And so what we would be able to do with this project is to, you know, work with those same city departments and work with community foundations to make sure that that tide is rising for a lower-income demographic as well. So I did send an email out just with the press releases, a link to our website, my contact information. So if anyone has, you know, any questions or you want to just kind of dig around and see what this whole lead poisoning prevention thing is about, you can do that there. And that's all I have. So does anyone have any questions for me?
Councilmember has a question? Yeah, um, April Timley. Not a question, but I just want to thank you for being able to show up tonight and sharing these with us. Thank you for the city of Battle Creek and County for lead abatement across the county. I'm sure we'll be looking forward to working with you over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Spiker.
Thank you, Shawna, again, for the presentation and coming. I appreciate the information. I just have a quick question. You stated that there was a grant for healthy homes type issue, but let me see what I can do.
type issue, but let me see what I know. What was the name of that grant that you said that if it wasn't lead based, it could be some other healthy home issues that somebody had to pay the price for?
Okay, so actually, it's in conjunction with the lead abatement. So it's not separate. So if we go into a home, and this is specific to the HUD grant, if we go into a home and find lead hazards and then we also find healthy homes issues, which could be mold, it could be problems with like furnace filters and ventilation. It could be also access. So if someone is disabled and they need their bathroom remodeled so that they can get in and out of the shower, those kinds of things are healthy home assessments. So we would be able to use some of those funds to address those issues if we find lead hazards in the home as well. So it's part of the lead abatement grant, and it's actually called Lead Hazard Control Reduction Grant, and the funds are healthy homes supplemental funding.
So additionally, there has to be lead present?
Correct. Now, one of the good things is, so if, for example, we go into a home and we don't find any lead, um, the Neighborhoods Inc. of Battle Creek is also working throughout the county and so is Community Action Agency. So they have other funds available for those types of things if they were to come up. Um, and both of those grants can be applied for directly on their website. So it doesn't necessarily have to be, uh, you don't necessarily have to go through the lead abatement program in order to apply for those other programs that Community Action and NIBC both have.
Great, thank you. You will be hearing from me.
Okay, hopefully, I will.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Okay, next is public comments. Each person addressed the council on agenda items during this session. Up to three minutes, proper form is required. Who's up first for public comments, Chief?
Hello? Okay, um, this is Garrett Brown, 1016 South Superior Street. Um, just a couple of things. Um, one, I'm glad that the council is discussing the political sign issue. During my last campaign, there were really kind of like just political attacks about the fact that I had put up signs in, I want to say, July. Um, and at the council meeting, council meetings, I had run up the fact that the Supreme Court had struck down certain municipal content-based sign ordinances, and that was applicable to Albion. And that was something I believe that Attorney Harkness also stated publicly. Um, and so I I think that that's a good thing to be vindicated in that and hopefully that the council can just remove that or clarify for the public that that section of the sign ordinance is is nonenforceable. So that's the first thing. Uh, second thing, uh, agenda item G, the poet laureate, I really, I'm neutral on that, but um, I I I was curious about the three-year term for that position. I think in most cases, uh, positions like that are now are appointed annually. Um, so hopefully, the council can kind of discuss why that's a three-year position. And then finally, in the the packet for agenda item H, the Albion Standing, there was a 30-plus-page transcript that inaccurately attributed comments. And so I'm curious about how that ended ended up there. I've submitted a FOIA. But again, I know this is the political season, so there's there's attempts to do the 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 politics of personal destruction, but um, I I think if that's something that was not, you know, council committed, um, that there should be some transparency about how that ended up there. Because again, like I said in in previous comments, the fact is that across this country, there's been a long history of police brutality. Um, and I think the national attention that the George Floyd incident and the Breonna Taylor incident have brung to that issue, I think that the council's time and energy could have been better spent, um, you know, having a work group discussion or something, study session on issues of police reform and and what that looks like in Albion versus trying to, again, do the the politics of personal destruction, attack whatever political opponents or people who might hold a different view than you. Um, so mayor and council, hopefully, there's some transparency to the public about how that came about and the purposes for it. So I'm going to do my mo- the best I can to get to the bottom of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Who's next, Chief?
Hello?
Yeah, we are here.
Okay, thank you. Sonia Brown, 713 Orchard Drive. I just quickly want to discuss the agenda item on Albion Standing. I know the packet included a memo from administration. Uh, first of all, I want to thank administration for taking the time to address the demands that were submitted. But regarding the memo, I just wanted to just quickly run down a few points. The first is, um, the answer to the ask of a community committee being formed to review the policies from an anti-racism approach. The answer mentioned the Equity Task Force that the council voted to establish during the Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Crisis. However, there is nothing stopping council from adopting a resolution or creating a policy that creates a community committee to address the Albion Police Department policy specifically. Um, the answer about the statistics regarding traffic stops by race, um, that is voidable. I've submitted a FOIA for it. However, again, council has the power to create a policy that says, you know, those stats can should be, for the sake of transparency, available on the city website. The years that have been mentioned and every year annually, uh, moving forward. The answer around, um, the anti-racism training for officers, it says since 98 that you, uh, the police department has had anti-racism training. So I think it's important to understand that cultural diversity training is not the same as anti-racism training. So the training that the Albion Department of Public Safety has had is not anti-racism, anti-racism training, and the ask is specifically anti-racism training. The community conversations, glad to know that the police department is willing to take part in part in those. And actually, the hiring practices, I'm going to address those two together because I know in the past, we've had community policing grant. And that was a perfect opportunity and 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 we had the funds to really dive into into hiring practices and how to build relationships with the community. But instead, those grant dollars were primarily used to fund a full-time police position at the Marshall Alternative High School. So what I'm saying is, council, you have the power to create policy to address every single one of these demands. And the time is now. Opportunities have passed us before and we can't continue to allow those opportunities to pass us. We have to be proactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, my name is Central Perez, 419 Division Street here in Albion, Michigan. Um, I was one of the co-sponsors of the Superior March here in Albion, which is when we started Albion Standing. Uh, my comments are about agenda item for Albion Standing and the demands that we're making. Um, inside of the packet was a transcription that was, um, totally false and inaccurate in so many ways. Uh, my organization has already found over 100 inaccuracies in your transcription, and I thought it was very appalling. I have never went by my government name in my activism nor my artistry. And my government name was put inside of this packet, putting my kids in danger. You don't understand the threats that come with taking a stance. And the stance we're taking is on the right side of history. Whether you like the way that we say the words that we say or not, it is our freedom of speech, which has nothing to do with our demands, which is another reason it should not be inside of the packet. It is very disappointing that a former NAACP member even sits on the city council and would allow that to happen. I have corresponded with people from NBC that have never ever seen a transcription of a protest that did not have an incident of violence occur. So that was totally appalling to use another candidate's name inside of the transcription in order to get political gain was also very disheartening to see because this isn't a presidential race, it's a mayoral race. We already know very much who did that. His motives have been very apparent ever since this started, even though he was invited so many times to come and make a statement or say something. And it's very disheartening, Mayor Atchison, that you have taken the stance you have taken. I tried to form a friendship with you and that didn't work out too well. Um, I only wanted to make sure there was a bond between the mayor and the community and you didn't understand what I was trying to do. We have no problem with the Albion Police Department. As a matter of fact, we thank Scott Kip. Uh, congratulations on everything that you have achieved and your recent honors that you have been given. Thank you for supporting us through this. Thank you for the two city council members that do support us and have been very supportive. We thank you very much. But to try to paint us as wrong or however you wanted to paint us just made you look bad in the end. It didn't make us look bad at all because we are standing for our constitutional rights to protest peacefully. And that's one thing you can't take from us. We're a peaceful protest and we're standing on the right side of history. Sorry, you're on the wrong side. Thank you.
Ms. Santa Maria, you said you want to make a comment this evening?
Hold on. No, I'm not. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Tolo Santa Maria, and as a new member of the Albion community, I would like to provide you with some context around two items which you will be discussing this evening. The Arts Commission and establishing a poet laureate for the city of Albion. In regards to establishing the Arts Commission, when my husband and I arrived in Calhoun County in the city of Albion about a year ago, we were impressed with the charisma and warmth of the people as well as the natural beauty of Calhoun County. Additionally, we were struck by the wonderful progress the city of Albion and Calhoun County has made in its journey to revitalize itself. Consequently, communities who invest in educating the youth and community members in the arts are typically communities that progress as art positively influences society by instilling values and translating experiences across time and space. And research has shown that art affects the fundamental sense of self. With this context in mind, I ask for your support of establishing an arts commission. As for the poet laureate role of the city of Albion, the city poet laureate is an honorary position that promotes literacy and literature among Albion city residents of all ages. The poet laureate acts as an advocate for poetry, language, and the arts. Poet laureates create create a unique artistic legacy through public readings and civic events. In terms of my background relative to this role, I'm a published author who graduated with a Master of Fine Arts and Creative Writing from St. Mary's College of California with honors. I studied creative writing and poetry under former New York Times Poetry Editor Matthew Sapruder and Brenda Hillman, Chancellor of the Academy of American Poets. I have performed poetry in New York City, San Francisco, and Miami, and have taught poetry to college students and high school students alike. Finally, I humbly ask for your support for the poet laureate nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Last public comment is? Mr. Asher?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, first, good evening. Yeah, my time hasn't started yet, but I'd like to say good evening. Uh, and I'd like to discuss real quick what Santrell Perez had talked about. Uh, my name is Jerry Lashley. I'm one of the co-founders of Albion Standing. We've gone over that transcript that was included in the packet. And we've gone over just the first 30 minutes of the transcript next to the video, and we found over 100 corrections so far in just the first 30 minutes of that video, including misquotes, misattributions, and audible areas that were left out while they were labeled crosstalk, including the fact that it leaves out a friendly interaction with ADPS officers. There are also seven highlighted passages regarding one of the mayoral candidates running against Mayor Atchison, including inserting her name in quotes when it wasn't even mentioned. Now, the video of the protest is absolutely public property. Uh, anybody has the right to any information on that video. It is very disconcerting and worrisome that just in the first 30 minutes of that hour and 40-minute video, we have been able to find over 100 corrections. Uh, it's so disconcerting that we have had multiple news agencies request that once we complete the corrections, that we send them a copy of our corrections with the original video and the transcript that is provided in the packet. So that that is all I really have to say about that. Uh, I would like the city to, the council to really, really really take a look at at the way that this is being portrayed. It seems to me to be nothing but an attempt to sway away from the issues that we're trying to discuss. So that's all I have to say on that. I thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Lashley. May I have a motion to adjourn and go into closed session?
Go.
For? Just going to go to your role?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Pfizer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a request to make an amendment to this contract. But when this all started, there were two major factors involved. Number one, live trees were being harvested unnecessarily for their value as sawdust lumber. Number two, all the scraps, unsellable and hollow trees, sawdust and chips from Rusty Four Farms Sawmill were being disposed of in our tree dump, which is explicitly for the use of city residents and not commercial enterprises as it is written in our website. This is not conjecture or hearsay. This is fact, as proven by eyewitness account and pictures taken at the time. Now Rusty Four Farms wants to return to the days when the company would charge the city to cut down the tree, haul it to their company's sawmill where it would be cut into sellable lumber, from which the company will sell and keep all the money, and then haul all the unwanted scraps and chips to the city tree dump for disposal. This is exactly what the past year of suspension, investigation, and RFQ have been all about. The only thing that will have changed is that they now have a contract in place allowing them to take the city's trees for their own gain and profit. I say no. We are contracting to take down dead and dangerous trees only. Any sellable or sawable trees should be set aside in the tree dump and sold to the highest bidder, so does the city making the money from our trees and not cut it. Are you?
Another comment by councilman? Last thing, the city attorney has information for us.
So we kind of talked about this the last time that we discussed approving the original contract. It was specifically drafted in a way, and we put in here that the trees that are cut down from the city are to be transported to the city tree dump for disposal because that was a concern that was expressed when we did the investigation. That was a concern that obviously Councilwoman Smith still has. So we intentionally drafted the contract in a way so that wouldn't be an issue. The problem that I think we had with the RFQ process is that the bid that was put in was really just some information scratched on a receipt. And that was turned in as the bid. And in fact, we had to go back for more information to finalize the contract. It didn't reference anywhere in there that the prices were contingent on getting to take away the lumber. So it was not drafted to account for that. So, you know, I completely get where Councilwoman Smith is coming from. There is, and certainly there is value to the tree. You know, quite frankly, my opinion is if that was something that the contractor wanted, it should have been more explicitly stated in the bid. So, because that was counsel put that discussed it at the time that they voted on the contract and made a determination as it relates to, you know, are the prices appropriately set even that they're able to buy the lumber as well? So, I just want to help to have that information. But as it's drafted right now, they do not take the wood.
They do not take the?
The way that the contract is drafted right now is any trees that are cut down, any city trees that are cut down go straight to the city tree dump.
And that's the? Mayor, put that way.
And that's the contract being designed?
That is the contract that both parties design. So this is the, we say all of this now? Correct. The contractor is asking to modify it so that he can take the wood.
I have a question.
Councilmember Clark?
So I guess I kind of misunderstood that myself because it, the statement that the handwritten statement says that he had all rights to the, from the trees removed that Rusty signed, that was attached.
That's what, that's what the contractor is asking to have modified. He wants to add that language. That language is currently not in the contract. The contract right now is the city, I mean, basically the city keeps the wood that's cut down. We pay the contractor for the service of cutting a tree down, but the city keeps the wood. The contractor wants to modify it so that he gets all the rights to the wood.
So I agree with Councilwoman Smith on that. If, I don't think that he should. And if it's going to be a consideration or we have to make a modification because other council members feel like it's, it should be granted, I think there should be it should be granted, um, I think there should be, uh, since there's a profit in it for him to be able to remove the trees, I mean, take the trees and then do whatever service he does to them, that, uh, the pricing should be looked at differently.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. What does the city do with the dead trees? Dead trees?
Councilman Smith.
I can only tell you what I have observed. Uh, in the past, when we did not have a contract signed with, uh, this organization, they would take any tree that looked like it could be sawed into sellable lumber to their lumber mill, uh, saw it up into that lumber and sell it off. Uh, any scraps, such as the outside cutting of the bark, things like that, bundle up onto pallets and take out to our city dump, our tree dump, uh, put them out there for burning. Anything that he thought could not be sawed into sellable lumber was also thrown out there.
So, my question is, what does, what does the city do with?
I think Councilmember Smith was wrapping up his statement, and then we'll hear your clarification on your question.
Okay, I know you're talking from Rusty Ford Farms' point of view or from the city? Okay, go ahead.
Well, what I would say was that, uh, if, if it's not sellable lumber, you know, if it's, if he cuts down a tree and it's hollow, or it's bad wood, it goes to the tree dump. If it's something that he feels he can make money off of, it goes to his saw. The scraps from his sawmill come to our tree dump for disposal.
So, he has the choice. This tree is good, I'll keep it. This tree is bad, I'm going to take it to the city of Albee Tree Dump.
Very much.
The, the Councilman's right to, to my knowledge, some of these trees are taken to the tree dump, feasible or used to make wood chips for some of the playgrounds and parks and things like that.
So, no, go ahead. I might be.
I, I believe at some point during our discussions, uh, that the city attorney, I believe, uh, brought up the point that, um, wood that is taken to the tree dump is available to citizens for fire. I believe that's what this.
Well, I think, well, so I think that that has happened in the past, but that is no longer occurring because that was, because it's city property. The, the citizens shouldn't be taking the fire from the tree dump. But that, apparent had occurred in the past improperly.
Right, clarification.
Further comments? Councilmember Spicer. Well, can you finish your, your comment for the, for the go back here?
You could go ahead.
Councilman.
So, why would you, why would the city have them cut down a tree that was a usable tree? I mean, if, if, if there was nothing wrong with a tree, that's no, uh, rotting or anything, would, would he have the right to even cut that tree down?
Would you clarify, city attorney? I believe the contract that we, that we are currently under, it specifies that the trees that are selected to be cut are directed by city employees.
Correct.
He cuts the trees that the city wants cut down.
Correct. He can only cut down the ones that were supposed to be done.
So, we have an internal problem. They're cutting down the trees.
Just got the contract signed, and we didn't have it in place before, and that was part of how we, the investigation inquiry, et cetera, was to determine, uh, if things were being done properly. So, at this point, you ask, how could that happen? I would suggest that trees rot in various locations, and I don't think it's unheard of to have a tree pose a hazard, and so that it's taken down because at the base or something is rotting, uh, and it's determined that the best case is just to have it taken down. Once it down, there may be limbs and other things that are pretty large that have some commercial value. So, I can see where that would come up. Uh, but the point I believe the city attorney is making is, is city property, we have a contract to have the trees cut down and the debris removed, and, and the contract that provides it taken to the city dump. And that's what we agreed to, uh, by the line of Councilman Smith, uh, and the city attorney's, uh, assessment, which is we have a contract for tree cutting services, and then that's what it should be. And the material is city property, so it goes to the city dump. It's an interesting idea to manage the material that gets put out there if there are portions, uh, that have commercial value that could be sold. The city could sell that once or twice a year or whatever. But as far as this amendment to give him all the rights to the city property that he cuts down, I, I would recommend we don't do that. Other comments, quick out. Councilmember.
Thank you. I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Smith also, um, because if we get something cut down and then, uh, we could use it to help better the city, and I think we need to use our own stuff, so, um, I'm gonna agree with that.
Any further comments? Okay. So, we're looking seconded to, and we approve this amendment. Uh, we've had a discussion, any further comments? Mr. Nego, would you read your roll, please?
Wait, one second. One, one second.
We're voting on whether or not to approve this amendment to the contract, which would put in the contract language that whatever he cuts down, whatever is cut down, Rusty Ford Farms has the first right to take whatever he wants. That's, that's what we're voting on.
So, if we say yes, Rusty gets to decide what they want to do with the trees?
Correct.
So, if we say yes, okay.
If we say no, we don't amend the contract. Mr. Nego, please read your roll.
Councilmember.
No.
Reid? Matt?
No.
Lawler?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Williamson?
No.
And Mary?
No. Next item, I am D, ordinance 2020-08, an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 3, to amend Sections 2, 241 through 2, 246, the Human Relations Committee. May I have a motion?
Remove.
The board. City attorney, do you want to give us an overview?
Sure. So, there, there was actually, uh, there, I guess what was an outdated and somewhat antiquated Human Relations Committee already contained with our ordinance is the problem is when, when you have a committee per our charter, there, there are no standing committees of, of the councils, so in order to kind of accomplish what I think the council is trying to do through the adoption of Resolution 2020 dash 36 is to create a Citizens Advisory Board, which the council's approved, naming the city of Albee Equity Task Force. So, we've set that up, uh, and I, and just initially, the membership is seven members, uh, comprised of the, um, individuals that council discussed, uh, um, community leaders, Albee employees, things of that nature. Uh, all members serve without compensation, terms of two years. Duties are outlined in Section 2 dash 243, um, and they track very closely with what was contained in the resolution. Um, a couple of things I did add, just to give the task force a little bit more breadth, and a little bit more, uh, I guess, um, involvement, um, such as, uh, uh, you know, giving counsel, uh, and advice on how to protect the rights of all persons to enjoy public accommodations and facilities and furnishing equal services to all residents of the ci- city. Um, some of that was taken from the prior ordinance to the committee that was in place, and, and I think it was, um, it, it fit very well into what I think the, the goal of the Equity Task Force was. So, we've got the duties listed there, meetings are, um, really, I think the task force can determine, um, how often it needs to meet, um, and, uh, we've set up as a majority vote, um, elect, electing officers is contained under, under the meeting section. Um, the balance of the ordinances that were formerly Section 2 dash 245 and 2 dash 246 are reserved, um, because they weren't really needed, but, um, that's pretty, that's, that's pretty much it. It's set up pretty simply, um, you know, meetings are open to the public, they're subject, uh, we set up so that they're subject to the OMA, uh, so that the public can certainly attend and, uh, give comment and feedback, or, um, I'm not going to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, are there questions? Comments? I would ask councilmember Spicer, this is the task force that was part of the resolution that you put forward that was approved. Are there things missing, missed ordinance as far as duties, responsibilities, scope?
Um, I, I think the attorney, our system has done a pretty good job at, um, developing drafts in the ordinance, so I, not that I can at this point. Okay.
Now, the flag of the government. Mr. Nego, would you read your roll, please?
Councilmember Reid.
Councilman.
I, I, I'm here, but I'm just, there's, there's certain things that just don't lie out of context. Where, where on the, we demand a citizen permit?
Well.
We're on the, pardon?
B.
We're on I am D.
Yeah, I am D on the agenda.
The Human Relations Committee. Okay. B. All right. Yes. Councilmember Smith.
Uh, yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yeah. Next item is item C, ordinance 2020-09, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 58, Article 4, Section 58 to Number 7, insulting, annoying conduct in public, may I have a motion?
Remove.
The board. Okay. So, at the last council member, we did just briefly discuss and said this would come up, uh, and the city attorney clarified that, uh, it's not an enforceable ordinance. Do you have anything else you wish to add, city attorney?
Um, so I, I, I put in, in the final ordinance, actually, a, a, a U.S. Supreme Court case that I think pretty well illustrates why this is not, uh, enforceable, is that there was a, uh, a case in the seventies where someone wore a shirt into a courthouse with expletives. The, the, the way that the ordinance is drafted is just in such a way that, you know, anyone, if they were to insult someone or annoy someone in public, they'd be cited for a misdemeanor which would never pass constitutional muster, um, because of prior case law and current case law. So, what I've done is repealed the ordinance in its entirety and reserve, uh, the section that is contained under for future use.
Okay. Councilmember. I think it's good when we identify things when they're not enforceable, that the capital follows through and takes action to get them amended or eliminated, uh, so they don't just hang out there and bother people. So, with that, uh, Mr. Nego, would you read your roll, please?
Councilmember Matt?
Yes.
Lawler? Yes. Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. I am D, approval of emergency expenditure, Northern Pump and Well Incorporated. May I have a motion?
Remove.
The board. Chief, do you want?
I don't have a lot of detailed comments, other than we have a home type of bed that needs to be fixed immediately, and so the city has authorized the emergency repair to the wells.
And we do have a page in here that gives specifics, let's take it through, guy with the packet. Any council member have a question or comment? Saying no, Mr. Nego, read your roll, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Item D, boards and commission appointments. Ms. Santa Maria, initial appointment to the yard commission in terms to expire 10/19/23. May I have a motion?
Remove.
The board. The date should be corrected to reflect March 3rd, 2023. I believe Councilman Smith made a motion, and that's the word, thank you. Okay. Ms. Santa Maria addressed the council earlier on, uh, receiving a public comment, uh, and I think it is, uh, she's an excellent candidate, and asked my colleagues to support the confirmation of her appointment. Or may I need a comment by councilman? Councilmember.
Um, no, I'm not.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is discussion to modify city ordinance 54 to 7, political signs to eliminate all provisions which are not legally enforceable, may I have a motion?
Remove.
The board.
City attorney, do you, do you want us to hold you, uh, of the portions that will be eliminated, or just the whole section of the law?
Well, uh, Ken, so, let, let me say this. I mean, the, the, what's on there for discussion references Section 64 dash 7, um, some of the members on council were here. The last time, uh, we kind of touched on this and some of you weren't, so just to get it highlighted, in 2015, the U.S. Supreme Court issued an opinion in a case called Reed versus Gilbert, and basically what that case said was, um, regulation of, of signage, particularly when it relates to, um, political signs, uh, or things of that nature, had to be content neutral. And at the time, pretty much every city and township in the United States had language in their sign ordinances that addressed political signs to deal with all the little square temporary signs that you see, and some people have one in the yard, some people have 50 in their yard. Um, and, you know, it was put in place to, uh, try to curtail them being there year round and, and things like that, but because it wasn't content neutral, um, it, it didn't meet, uh, the strict scrutiny standard that, um, the Supreme Court, uh, has, has said exists for con- uh, uh, content regulation. So, here's the problem, um, the implications of Reed versus Gilbert go beyond the section for just political signs. It actually affects the entire sign ordinance, which contains 24 separate ordinances. So, we can amend it, but it all needs to be amended, um, and it's going to take some time. So, I mean, I'm happy to start working on that, uh, but it's definitely more than one ordinance. It's probably going to require us to touch on most, if not all, of those 24 ordinances.
And what, what are you doing?
Down below.
Okay, thank you. And what are you, what are you, what's being asked to be done with this?
So, what would, so what we would do is we would go through all 24 sections of our current sign ordinance, and we would basically modify them so that the regulations on them are what would be content neutral. So, we would regulate the signs based on size, shape, um, whether they could be lighted, uh, you know, uh, things like that, anything content neutral, but we can no longer say, uh, by way of example, if Councilman Lawler, political sign can only be out, um, you know, from this month to this month, and it can only be, you know, placed in these locations. It can't, you can't regulate based on the content, it can only regulate based on content neutral things. So, you know, we can say, hey, temp- we could say as a general sense, temporary signs can only be out from, you know, uh, September to November, but we can't say temporary political signs can only be out from September or November. We have to go through and basically make them all, make the entire ordinance content neutral. neutral.
Down below.
Hey, thank you. So was there a problem that brought this, um, uh, that brought this modification up?
There's, there's portions of this that are not enforceable, and if we have ordinance and codes and things that are not enforceable, uh, we should make an effort, it, it's disincentivizes people following the codes and the rules and regulations if we have things that we don't enforce, and it really in the area of political science, uh, it sets a very bad precedent, and it is not a good example for elected officials to know there's an ordinance or something that prohibits it, uh, but to take the position that, well, it's not enforceable, so I don't have to pay attention to it, well, I just clean it up and get rid of it if it's not enforceable. So I would say at this point, this, this item should be tabled, by the city attorney, sufficient time to go through and, uh, clean up the entire, uh, city ordinance is on the side, so I'll make a motion that we take this.
Well, thank you.
Is there a second to take?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Domingo with your read your roll please.
Councilmember Williamsson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes. Okay, item D, uh, request approval of resolution 2020-53, a resolution establishing a non-salary honorary position to be known as the voca void of the city of Allen. May I have a motion?
Remove.
Support. Is there discussion? Any questions, by counsel? Saying no, Mr. Domingo with your read your roll.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamsson.
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes. And I thank my colleagues for that. Item H, discussion request from Albion standing group, I believe Councilwoman President will request that be on the agenda.
I think you, I did, um, is, um, is it possible to hear, is Mr. Lastsley on the meeting of, um, Chief?
Yes, he's still on the meeting.
Okay, can you, um, I, I'm going to, you're allowed to, um, speak before I do because I brought this request forward so that, um, I was supposed to have that I, um, put this on the agenda for discussion so that the city and the community could have, um, a better understanding of the position of council as it relates to the Albion standing and their request, so, um, if he's there, I'd like him to, he can speak, okay?
Mr. Last.
Yes, thank you, thank you, uh, thank you all for having me and, uh, giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of, uh, our group Albion Standing. We are a diverse group of individuals who are committed to seeking racial equity and social justice in Albion, surrounding communities, and on a national level. We believe in bringing to light the social and judicial inequalities in our city and the nation, and we demand change. We aspire to dismantle systemic racism at every level. Now, if you would give me a few moments, I'd like to go through our list of demands and give you a brief, uh, reasoning behind each one. First, our demands are split into three sections. First is the Citizens Committee. We demand a Citizens Committee, uh, as Sonya spoke on briefly earlier, um, which means we need the city of Albion to promote and support the use of a Citizens Committee to overview all local and state policies regarding policing, to promote and support increased police community dialogue, restorative justice, and other strategies for proactively building trust within Albion's community of color. The next section of demands is driving while black slash existing while black, and in this we have four demands. First, we demand the release of all traffic stats by race over the past three years, and we have submitted a FOIA in regards to this, uh, but as Sonya alluded earlier, we believe that the city council, uh, can make a resolution to make this information public. Now regarding driving while black, uh, from 2011 to 2017, Stanford University completed the most comprehensive study regarding racial disparities in traffic stops that has ever been done. They examined almost 100 million traffic stops across 21 states, showing police stop and search black and Latino drivers two to three times more often, and with the basis of less evidence than white drivers, even though white drivers were found to have illegal items more often. Thirty-six percent of white individuals that are searched by the police have illegal items on them, while only 32% of black individuals, yet they are stopped and searched two to three times more often. The same study also found that five to 10% less black drivers are stopped after sunset, further suggesting black drivers are being racially profiled during the day. Now, to make sure that racial profiling isn't occurring in the city of Albion, and to address it if it is, we require comprehensive, robust, publicly available data collection disaggregated by race, ethnicity, and gender by the city of Albion and the ADPS, on key indicators of criminalization and racial profiling, such as stops, searches, arrests, and use of force. Next, we demand anti-racist training for all ADPS officers that enforce traffic stops and/or residential calls. Now, as was spoken earlier, we do understand that the city of Albion, or the ADPS, has done some diversity or sensitivity training, and while we believe that is definitely a step in the right direction, it is not enough. Now, anti-racism training, uh, has started back in the sixties, although it wasn't really called that until about 1992, um, it was, the ideas were formed by Dr. Martin Luther King, the Black Panther Party, Malcolm X, among others. Now, there are three stages of anti-racism training. First is diversity, which increases awareness, which I believe is what ADPS is currently doing. Now, with diversity training, it's, it develops a sensitivity and understanding of another ethnic group. It helps celebrate variety of cultures and gain knowledge of these cultures, it acknowledges and respects differences, it's a positive response, but it will never truly adjust systemic racism. There's also cultural competency training, which celebrates diversity, has an emphasis on effectively operating amongst other cultures, helps you learn to relate and communicate across cultural lines, but it doesn't look at power, privilege, or access. Now, the type of anti-racism we are training, or we are calling for, uh, creates social and racial justice. It looks at lar, at the large societal perspective regarding issues of oppression and social change. Sites are set on changing the systems and structures that perpetuate inequality and inequity in our society. It addresses issues of power and privilege along the lines of social identities. It is realizing that racism is a problem and committing to work towards its end. It will make you ask, how do our practices and policies at ADPS not serve people of color, and how do they over-serve the white community? Our next demand is, we demand the community conversations regarding driving while black slash policing while white continue as started in 2017. Now, from what I understand, while the conversation was underway, there was very good dialogue between ADPS and the community, but it was abruptly canceled, and in these times, when the entire world is looking at the racial divide and injustices, we believe it would be best to continue this open dialogue. And again, I believe it was Sonya that thanked ADPS for their interest in continuing these conversations, and again, I would also like to, uh, say thank you. Next, we demand racially motivated 911 calls be prosecuted as a hate crime. In June of this year, Governor Whitmer proposed making false racially motivated 911 calls a hate crime across the state of Michigan. Also, in June of this year, New York lawmakers approved legislation to allow victims of false bias 911 calls the ability to sue. California lawmakers are currently considering legislation that would establish civil remedies and criminal, criminal penalties for racially motivated 911 calls. Former New York Senator Hamilton, on making nine, false 911 calls a hate crime, said that's the only way you're going to get people to stop doing it. Now, one of the big arguments against making 911 call, racially, uh, motivated 911 calls a hate crime, is people believe, this has been brought up on a national level, and many people, uh, argue that it will reduce 911 calls from people that actually need help, although there is no statistical evidence to back that up. One reason I believe it is important is because black Americans suffer a much higher risk of violence by cops, which also, uh, causes trauma, unnecessary fear, anxiety, and depression levels that are risen amongst the black community. A Department of Justice investigation into the Seattle Police Department found that over 50% of excessive force complaints involved racial minorities. In 2016, the Center for Police Equity looked at 19,000 use of forces incidents between 2010 and 2015, and found that black individuals were far, are more likely to be the victims of use of force by the police than white individuals, particularly with pepper spray, tasers, gunshots, or physical combat, contact. University of California Davis study found that unarmed black Americans as a whole are 3.49 times more likely to be shot by police than white Americans. Also, a recent public health report found young black men are three to 10 times more likely to be killed by police during, quote, "legal intervention" than white men, young white men. And lastly, on that, 2010, a 2010 governor's task force review found that black and Latino officers were even at a greater risk to be killed by their fellow police members. And last section of our demands is protect and serve your community. We demand a plan in place to implement racial diversity in the hiring practices of ADPS. Now, we know that this is an issue not just in Albion, not even just in the state, it is a national issue, with low applicants amongst minorities for, uh, becoming police officers. Now, we know that Albion has roughly a 33% African-American population, and ADPS nowhere near represents any of that. Now, there are solutions to it. We suggest a department-sponsored cadets through minority-based scholarships. We know that ma, I, we know that many departments across the country sponsor cadets, and we recommend that ADPS look into scholarships for minority-based, or for minority cadets. Now, a, according to a Dole Consulting Group survey over from 49 states, the top seven reasons one becomes a police officer, we need to address some of these if we would like to increase the number of minority officers. The top seven reasons someone becomes a police officer, white officers, their number one reason was because it's interesting and exciting work. Black officers also said it was, that was high on their list, but the number one reason black officers wanted to become police officers was to help people. Eighty-three point three percent said that was their number one reason to become a police officer. Only 67.5% of white officers said the same. And another thing you need to look at is police interactions in minority communities. Forty-five point seven percent of white officers said that seeing police interactions in their community inspired them to be a police officer, while only 38% of African-American police officers said that that is what inspired them to be an officer. So that is our list of demands, and I would be happy to take any questions, uh, or let you discuss it yourself, but I thank you very much for your time.
Counsel, thank you, Mr. Last. Councilmembers, do you have questions for Mr. Last? Counselor Spicer, your call.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to say that, um, while, um, this subject and, and, is really, um, for a lot of minority people, a difficult and uncomfortable conversation to have, um, I do think that, um, differing opinions and positions needs, need to be out there, and I do believe that there is room for common ground, um, from both sides, so, um, I, I just appreciate, um, Mr. Lastsley and, um, what he's trying, he is super trying to do peacefully, and, um, and, and, and procedurally and, and, and protocolly, so, um, I know that, um, are, we have an outstanding, um, police department chief, and, um, a lot of the issues that are going on with police departments don't necessarily apply to our police department, but, um, I think it's important to take a stand for others, because when, um, Martin, Martin Luther King was, they're boycotting for the rights for blacks to have a seat on the bus anywhere they wanted to, some people thought, oh, they should quit, they're, you're upsetting the apple cart, so to speak, don't do that, so, um, sometimes there are difficult things to do, but we have to do them, particularly when you know that something is, you know, not appropriate, not right, so I, I, I just appreciate everyone, the police department, the city manager, the council, and us all, taking the time to listen to and, and consider, um, other people's point of views, um, because now, you know, not only how we feel is always important, we have to put ourselves in other people's shoes and consider their feeling, so, um, I just want us to, to hear from them, to be heard, what can be done, and obviously, the city manager or the chief, I don't know what it is, has, um, provided some information per the group's request, so I think, I don't know what they, you know, what the end result or what, what is next, but I do think that, um, we can move forward from here, um, as a city, and become healthy and whole, and working together, so, my opinion.
Mary Bartlett.
So this is a multifaceted issue, I'd like to kind of express it in more than just two sides, I think everybody has an individual experience of law enforcement, everyone has an individual experience or journey, um, equity and race relations, um, and no two journeys are probably alike for any person in this room or anyone who's watching, so, um, I, I respect this group coming forward and sharing this list of demands, that, you know, demand is a very, you know, very harsh and strong word, and I appreciate sharing that, um, expressing how strongly they feel about how important these issues are, uh, not just to the folks who represent that group, but to so many who know them, and so many people we know in our own neighborhoods and in communities here. Um, one of the things I want to mention is, um, council, uh, member Clark brought up at the, I believe either the last council meeting or council meeting prior to that, um, setting up some sort of, um, town hall around, um, the public interaction with police, uh, and being able to have a public conversation, not only with our police force, but our council, um, to continue to hear experiences of citizens, um, in the community, police, good and bad, um, focusing on what is really, what is really strong about, um, how we feel our police force is doing in the committee, um, but also where we think we've had some not-so-breathe experiences and what we can do to learn from them, um, so I really want to respect council member Clark's suggestion, and, um, from what I remember, all of us kind of eyeing that, but yeah, we probably need to do that, um, so we need to, um, develop an action that'll make that happen. The other thing I want to, um, say is that, uh, as council, you know, everything we get from, uh, the public isn't something that we're, each individual is going to enjoy or, um, think is right or accurate, or, um, put at the highest level of, uh, priority, um, but what I do think is our responsibility as councils to make sure that when citizens are bringing something to our attention, no matter how they bring it, um, I know that within just the past week, I had the, I had the citizen who was yelling upset about this loud noise outside of their home, and then I have a quiet, like, this is really kind of bad, I need this taken care of, um, so no matter how people, how people come to us, it's our responsibility as council members to be serious and to be, um, thoughtful in bringing those, um, issues to council, so I really appreciate, uh, Councilman Spicer's, um, uh, work to do that, no matter what resistance you've met in that, I really appreciate bringing that here, and then the, um, other point I want to touch on is that, um, I really appreciate Albion Public Safety. Safety's openness and transparency to information and to responding to requests for information. In fact, tonight, the packet that Chief Kip has brought to us with information related to several of the topics that this group is talking about, what I think is really special about Albion is that we are a small enough community and we know enough people here that we can actually reach out personally and say, hey, Chief Kip, I really want to know about this, and then we can make this available to the public. I think what's really important in all of these conversations that we have with the community is that we share with them up to the max that we can as far as information. The more information, the more informed public, the better our relationships will be with our fellow neighbors in the community. So, I really appreciate Chief Kip and all the work you've done to be as transparent and forthcoming with information that we need and that the public would need to understand where our deficiencies are.
Period, Morgan.
We're doing a great job.
I need some noodles.
And then finally, this was brought forth by Councilwoman Spicer, and there was this transcript of the protest included in the packet, and I do have some serious concerns about that. I don't understand what the purpose of including the transcript was to the significance of Councilwoman Spicer's inclusion of a citizen's request was for the demand to talk about police relationships in the community. I have a serious question about who funded it and who paid for it. I think that the public has a right to know if the city went around and videotaped the protest and then paid for its transcription. I think they have a right to know if it was an individual, a council member, or a campaign. I think that all would be, that should be publicly available and may have been done tonight by whoever has done that. And I'm not sure how helpful it is, and then also addressing the inaccuracies, was that transcription double-checked? You know, what is the veracity of that? That was basically a, he said, she said, a protest that took place outside of City Hall with no, with no kind of double-checking and checks and balances and saying, yep, this is exactly how it happened. So, automatically, when we have these really important conversations in this chamber about race relations, equity, and police force, it's important not to throw gasoline on already lit fire, and I don't think that transcript was helpful at the moment, so I would like an answer tonight from my fellow council members about who paid for it, who requested it be included, and why would that include it in tonight's packet, because I think it was unhelpful. I do.
And other thoughts, Councilwoman Reed.
I think if this group has one group that's demanding a last thing, and in the first place, when I first read this and I saw all this, we demand, we demand, a lot of times you can do better what you want when you say, we request, but keep saying, we demand, because a lot of people are like, oh, fine, you want to demand, maybe you want to add that, you know? And so, it would have been a better situation had they said, we'd like to start a dialogue, we request this, we request that. And I don't mind, like Shane said, or like Mrs. Clark said, a town hall meeting because you have one group that's saying that they're applying, what is everybody else doing? You know, you've got a whole city here, but you've got one group of a few people making the demand. I don't want to just start with that, and I think that we should kind of precipitate until we can get something set up so that we can hear from everybody, hear from other people other than the one group that wants to be made.
The other thoughts, Councilwoman Apple.
Thank you. While it may be, and this is in total respect to Councilwoman Reed, while it may be three people, it doesn't matter if it's one person, we are, if someone is making a claim that something is not right and that, you know, that there is some injustice, well, now we as a council should be lending an ear to hear, and it does not always require the other individual to come to us. We know there's a issue, we're a council, we're elected to make a home for it as well. We could approach them and say, hey, let's have a dialogue. It doesn't have to be that they come to us. I just think that, you know, like I said, it's a difficult and uncomfortable conversations, and we should put ourselves, even our children, in the shoes of other people, because this is not only for you, we, we're aging. I think it's for the people to come, for young people coming for, after us, to set the tone and the, for discussion and to have those difficult conversations. I also want to say that, I don't know if these documents have been provided to Alvin Standing or if they're just for our information, I'm not certain.
They can be provided to anyone. I just got those today, so I would be able to bring it to the meeting tonight, and so you're free to provide those to anybody, and I can explain a little bit here in a minute.
Okay, and I also, thank you. Yeah, let's, you should be able to get them, or the clerk, I mean, or the city manager. But I do want to add that perhaps the task force is a way for Alvin Standing to get involved in the, you know, what's going on with the community and some of these deep-seated issues that they feel are important and necessary, and so are a lot of them. So, I think, you know, they should consider the task force as a group or way and option, and perhaps they want them to join or whatever, but I do think that this is a point where we all can come together and try to find a common ground. I don't think there should be any fever pointing, any throwing fuel on the fire, as Shane said, that just, that does not help at all, it does not accomplish anything. This is, obviously, they're not going away, they're digging their heels in even harder, and Reed can grow it through quite quickly, depending on how we handle it. So, we're going to get this right. I don't want to see this go up into something that's totally not necessary. Thank you.
Mayor Broden.
I was just going to ask, I did ask a question very badly, I was commenting, can anyone explain who paid for the transcription and how it ended up in the packet?
Are you done with your question? Councilwoman Reed.
Even then, well, I'm, in fact, I agree with what you're saying. We need to have a discussion, and I think for the betterment of our children coming up long, it needs to be something set out and really discussed rather than hollering instead of going around saying things that's really not necessary to say, or I, it bothers me, that's why I brought up the issue about the sign. It bothers me what our children are seeing. Those, that is supposed to be our future, and what we should be showing them is the best of what we can show them, not the worst of what we can show them. We want to show them what we want them to be as they grow up and start to take over where we're sitting on our rocket chairs or with our gray hair, and we want them to then take over what we want them to be with the frame of mind of the good things to do to make things better instead of make things worse. That's why I'm saying, you know, it's much better than saying, I demand this, you do that, you do the other, and say, let's sit down, find out what the problem is, what the problem is, and how we can eliminate or how we can change the problem from being a problem to being something that's a box.
Any other thoughts, Councilwoman Apple?
Mayor Broden. I'm going to ask my question again, and maybe I'll be more direct. Mr. Mayor, did you pay for the transcription and inclusion of the packet? And then, quick to me, though, maybe you could provide, who provided the transcription to you to be placed into the packet? And maybe the city manager this evening, I know this is not our client guy, but maybe you can provide some background on how the city received the transcription, how it placed in the packet.
Well, I'll answer your question with this, you know, double. Well, the answer you already have, as does every member on this council, because every member on this council is on the email. So, you wish to answer this question? By all means, please.
Everything that's on the city managers within the packet.
Any further thoughts, Councilwoman Apple? Mayor Broden.
Yes. Of the protest, or the, did the city pay for it? Who paid for the transcription of the protest?
Councilwoman Clark.
I will, I will say again that I think it would be a good idea to have a town hall meeting. I realize we're in a situation where we're supposed to do social distancing. I would be willing to ask the college if we could use the auditorium at the junior high, because that's a place where we could easily have enough people in there and practice the social distancing. I was kind of surprised that it wasn't on the agenda, because I requested it the first thing in our, in our last meeting. And also, I want to say to Chief Kip that I am also supportive of the police force now. I can't remember when it was much more different at one time, and since he's been chief and holding that office, there's been a big difference and change. I think it's a good idea for some of that documentation to come forward as far as what was requested, and that's something else that could be talked about in the meeting. So, hopefully, we will go forward with this and set this up.
Councilwoman Apple.
Going to reiterate, Councilwoman Reed's question. Mayor, you did pay for the transcription of the audio for the Alvin Standing people, so you did pay for this transcript, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, any other questions, Councilwoman Apple? Okay, next slide is, can I, sure.
Since I'm here tonight and I have the opportunity to speak, I take my chance to do this, I actually encourage the questions that are being asked at the department. One of the problems that we have in this country, law enforcement, is there's not enough communities asking these questions of their departments, and a lot of the problems that we have. Tough questions are important to be asked, because otherwise, you have a law enforcement agency that is simply doing what they want to do with no really oversight, and that's not the way it should be. And so, I encourage these questions to come forward. There's some things that I wish I could answer that I can't answer. I provided all of the council tonight a report by race from January 1st of 2015 to October 18th of 2020. It shows that we gave 36 African-Americans tickets and 82 white individuals tickets, and 2,680 period bills are unknown. I'm into that, and I'm not sure I actually know the answer to this either. So, the reason they say they're unknown is because they're civil infractions. The ones that show up in numbers are misdemeanors. Back when I first started working here, I was informed that I did not include race as a factor on civil infractions, because it was a civil matter, not a criminal matter. Why that is, I have no idea, and I can't answer that question, but I had talked to two of my officers who have worked at the Town and County Sheriff's Department at deputies, and they were told the exact same thing when they worked at the sheriff's department, that they could not include that. So, why that is, I do not know. I know some departments have separate cards that they use to track this information that's separate from the violation, and so that's an option that we can look into, doing some type of tracking that way. Now, the other thing you can see here is, over that five-year period, or just about five-year period of time, we wrote 2,801 tickets. Those are just tickets that were written. My officers, a couple, make five to 10 times that number of stops, and they give verbal warnings on the vast majority. I would say upwards of 2/3 to 75% of the stops that we make are verbal warnings, where they don't record anything. They just stop the person, they were speeding, and they say, hey, you're going fast, and you slow down, and that's the end of, that's the end of the conversation. And so, these numbers wouldn't reflect the vast majority of the traffic stops that we're making, and I've talked to several of the chiefs who've told me the same thing about their departments, that that's generally how officers do that. And so, we're not writing the tickets on the majority of what we do, so it's difficult to track that. So, I do think a different form of tracking is important, if that's what we're looking to do, and I'm all about doing that. I've seen these questions come up in other places, and I've had conversations with my command staff over the last year or so about this and how we go about doing this, we just haven't set anything in place, because I've not been asked those questions here. The only other thing I've provided-
One other quick question.
Sure.
Do, how would that, if we wanted to capture different info, what would that entail? Is there different software?
Well, capturing the information isn't difficult. My first thought was to do like a business card that had, basically, little checkmarks on it, and the officer would slip a reasonable stop, a date, their name, and then just check these boxes off of what they did with the racing driver was, whether they wrote a citation or gave a verbal warning and so forth, and then we could enter that into a basic database that I could create and track it that way would be easiest. Obviously, I'm sure there's software out there that you could purchase that would do the same type of thing. Again, this is all going to be based on solely on the officer's perception of who they pull over, not necessarily asking a question of the driver, but just basically marking that down. I did find an article from 1999 where the state police started doing that, I don't know if they're still doing that today, but it's a similar type of thing that, because most agencies, the majority of the stops that they make are verbal warnings, if not any type of citations or anything. Any more questions about the traffic stops before I go on to the other part of this? The other part that I provided to you was our use-of-force policy, which I'm happy to hand out to anybody who has any questions about that. The other two parts of it are the actual use-of-force policy, sample policy that I get from the Michigan Municipal League. And if you look through the two policies, you're not going to find very much difference between them at all, if any, because the third document I gave you is the review of the law, that they do reference to what you put in your policy. Now, our policies have to do two things. One, they have to direct the officers what to do, I guess, they direct the officer what they tend to and can't do. They have to be able to defend the city and the department both against civil lawsuits for what the officers did, but also lawsuits against or the dismissal of the officer. Obviously, we had a situation a couple years ago where that came into play, and our policy did exactly that. They defended us from the lawsuit, they defended us from the officers getting his job back. It worked the way it was supposed to work. The reason it works the way it's supposed to work is I don't write these policies, I let our attorneys write these policies, and these policies, specifically the use of force, the use of authorized weapons and so forth, are written by the attorneys for the Michigan Municipal League, who are the same ones that defend us in these lawsuits and defend us against civil actions and actions brought forward by officers when we discipline them. And so, it's important that we follow, you know, what our attorneys are telling us for these policies. I'm not against anybody reviewing and looking through them, but again, I did this and gave this to you to show you that this is where I get the policies from. I'm not making this stuff up, and I trust our attorneys that are writing these policies, that they're getting it right and doing it by the law, and they update these on a regular basis, so if there's any changes to law or so forth, it's in our policies. But again, I don't find any of these conversations difficult. I'm happy to do almost all of the stuff that's on there, if I can do it or if I can provide it. Some of the training that Mr. Lashley spoke of, we have been doing implicit bias training, which is what we did in 2015, and we did it again this year, which really is more along the lines of what he's talking about. We have done the cultural diversity training, and the other one that it has, we have a 12-part video training that we have for the cultural competency training as well, that the officers have been through. Now, we haven't done that one, I would say probably a couple years after I was, we can shoot, last time, we did that, probably 2013 or 14, and the majority of my officers now were hired from 2015 to now, so I would say the majority part hasn't had the cultural competency part of that, not that they haven't had it somewhere else, but the, what we've been working on the last couple of years is the implicit bias training, is, I believe, closer to what Mr. Lashley was speaking of. But again, conversations are great. I'm not sure that the college would allow us to go on campus in a public group, because they're really locked down about who they allow on campus, that might be a difficult thing to do. That's been one of my concerns, about trying to figure out how to have this public meeting, because anybody who decides to host the meeting is setting out some liability of some source, because you're having public coming into your area, and then if COVID spreads, it could become an issue along those lines, because they allow it to occur. So, it's something that definitely needs to be done, but I don't know how we're going to help that thing out right now.
Mayor Broden. I just, I know the general manager of the Ball Theater, and they're able to actively-
and they're able to actively operate under, uh, twenty percent capacity.
Right. And then I can come for it.
So two minutes of speech after then I can be to the question.
You made a good idea.
Any other questions for the chief?
Just thank you, just a comment. I want to thank you, um, chief, um, for the information and for having, making this available. I certainly, um, would request Mr. Lashley to reach out to you and/or the city manager to receive this information. Uh, this is what I'm talking about, you know, these issues. Let's bring them forth and, and have conversations and discuss them. I think we can, um, like I said, I think there's common ground. There's room for, you know, uh, us all to pretty much get what we want. Maybe not all of it, but some of it. So I, I really appreciate you all acting on giving this information and, um, I thank you very much.
One of the things that Mr. Lashley brought up too was sponsoring people through the whole process. I, I have paid for, or I shouldn't say that. The city has paid for, um, I want to say six or seven officers now to go through the entire police academy and some have gone through the police and, and the fire academy. Um, it's expensive. Uh, it runs around ten thousand dollars. That doesn't include all the equipment and uniforms that we have to buy then. And the last, I, I know the last few times in particular, I have advertised locally through our Facebook pages, everywhere I can get, anybody can get a word out to that if, you know, if you are interested in being a police officer in the city of Albion and, uh, and don't have the means to go through a police academy, we will send you to the police academy. We are one of the few departments in the state that actually do that. Uh, we will, then we will also put you through the entire fire academy. Um, the last four people that I've hired, um, or five, five people that I hired, four of them have to go through the police academy or the fire academy still. So they're starting the fire academy here soon. And one is a firefighter and he's in the police academy right now. So we, we sponsored him through the police academy. But we haven't got the applicants. Uh, the applicants that have, have turned us down for one reason or another or haven't been able to pass the state exam. And I can't control what, what the state exam does. But if you have anybody who's interested in working for us, please encourage them to apply. Um, like I said, I, I've offered jobs to three individuals I know of, uh, who are African-American, uh, and, and they either turned us down because of, they had a better job. Um, I don't know if people know, uh, Jordan, and I can't think of his last name off the top of my head. Uh, he works, he's the manager of the post office, um, and he was a reserve officer for us. And he was very interested in becoming a police officer and that often that job. The problem was if you got a good job at the postal service and when you take on this job, you have to pass the police academy, you have to pass the fire academy and you have to pass your field training program. And there's so many things that can go wrong through that whole part that you don't control. Um, it's difficult for people to separate themselves from a good job and come here and work here. And that's what has happened with a couple of our candidates, even though they really thought about doing it, they had other better jobs that it's just like, eh, it wasn't what they wanted to do at the time. But, um, the, the city's doing all the right things and, and allowing us to, uh, send people to the police academy and to fire academies and so forth. But, um, we just haven't got mechanics to come in. And if you know people or can encourage people, I'm more than welcome.
Dr. Walder.
Thank you. Um, didn't we have like some type of little cadet, um, theme?
Yeah, Mr. Walder started the cadet program with me. Uh, we had a difficult time holding it together due to some issues. Uh, I've been speaking with, um, Juanita Kemp-
Okay.
-who, her and I are working on getting this reorganized again. Our hope is maybe in the spring start another one. Uh, the difficulties right now with COVID, it's, it's hard to bring people together. Our tax base, it's, it's not so easy to do. And, um, but, um, we, we are trying to get it organized so that it's more successful than what last time that we did it.
Dr. Williams, please.
Thank you. Um, left. Um, if, um, if I, if I were thirty years younger, being that I am such a rare commodity, I would be-
Forget me so, Chief, so.
I would, I would be happy to have you.
You have to worry about that. But, um, also, I wonder, Paul, can you, um, possibly shed a light on why civil infractions cannot be raised?
Um, that's news to me. Um, I don't know if that's a county-specific thing because I can tell you obviously the council is aware and represents several municipal counties. And I know for a fact that, um, uh, the citation issued by one of my county, uh, tends to be raised on. Um, whether or not that information is tracked by the department, I couldn't tell you, but I assume that it will be because it's information was not stated. Not every department does it the same way. Um, but I would have to figure out and see, I mean, I, I can't admit the particular department I'm referring to is very, very meticulous. So I would be shocked if they were doing something improperly. It may just be a county by county, department by department thing.
And, and as I said, this is something that came up when I started twenty years ago. Um, and so everybody I talked to who started about the same time I did remembers the same numbers coming out. Chief McCollum was the chief at the time. Um, I don't know if it was something at the time the prosecutor decided it was an issue. Um, if I recall right from my recollection, it was a civil rights issue of basically, so the, the civil fraction becomes a foil of documents. So someone could point that. And because you're the suspect and if your name doesn't get, um, redacted, then it would also show your race. And I don't know if it had something to do with that along those lines, but we were basically told we couldn't do that. So we just didn't do it. No one's ever questioned that. We just do it, you know? And so everybody that's ever worked for me has been taught that way for as long as I've worked here. Um, and it's, it's not something that I have a problem changing. If we can't find a reason not to do it. Um, but again, like I said, you're still missing out on that data of all those stops officers make that they don't write any tickets for. So I think it's important to figure out a way where we're truly to track this information, that all of that gets counted and it's not just the ones we actually write citations to alone. Although I think that's an important piece of that to make sure that the racial disparity and overload that get verbal warnings compared to citations are identified as well. And that's, that's why I think it's important to track all that information. So, and I'd be interested to know if you're involved there as well.
Oh, there's one, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other officers or questions for the council? Next, Chief, appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
Next slide is discussion of recreation opportunities. Uh, well, the whole, four of the things in the city manager's report is, is good news. Uh, the specifically deal of recreation. And, uh, so just wanted to, to point out that there are things happening in the city. Uh, we did, because of COVID, as you know, the city manager and the recreation director got together and decided that instead of sending people getting paid and not able to work, uh, the recreation director wasn't comfortable with going back. So the recreation activities have been suspended. We all know that. Uh, but there are a wide variety of things that happen in the city, uh, that present recreation opportunities. And, uh, I'll, I'll start with the meeting that, uh, the superintendent of focus, the Marshall Public Schools serving Albion, which is Dr. Randy Davis, uh, met with Amy Snyder and, uh, Larry Williams, the recreation director. I don't know whether they had face-to-face or remotely via phone. Uh, but they are getting ready and they've already discussed and come to the agreement that Martin Locke attended the school pool will be back, opened back up. Uh, and they're going to open it up for the water aerobics and the building for open walking with limited participants. They'll have appropriate safeguards in place. Uh, and that the, uh, recreation department will be using a more detailed recreation plan as to when that's going to happen, how it's going to be implemented, et cetera. Uh, but I know there's a fair number of people in the community that, uh, really were disappointed they won't be able to, to use the pool for the, uh, water aerobics if that's coming back online. The other information, uh, we got from Dr. Davis is that the city with, our city manager and superintendent schools have agreed to extend the lease, uh, the spaces up at the opportunity high school that we used, uh, for another year at the same rate, I believe. So those are good things. And, uh, I know that, uh, this timer is working with Larry, uh, to come up with, uh, more recreation opportunities and get things going in. Uh, but that doesn't mean there aren't things, recreation opportunities in the city. We have tennis nets up down in Victory Park on the porch down there. People are using that. Uh, we, on Thursday of this week at the First Baptist Church at six P.M., they're getting ready to have a meeting. And I don't know if they're actually going to start playing kickball, but they're going to put together their kickball league. So if you're interested in that, it's First Baptist Church. And I think they're talking with some other churches in town about having a new church league. Uh, but everybody will be welcome to that. The, uh, past weekend, there was a free pumpkin patch over at the Reclamation Church on Maple Street, uh, under pumpkins and bags, free bag candy and whatnot. Saturday, the third of October. There are a variety of things, funny events going on here in Albion. Uh, I'll give Ms. Reed here, uh, an opportunity to describe the Fall Festival up at the opportunity high school. Other things we have going on is here in the city, uh, there's a cow, a lean dog costume, pet costume. And I've tried to convince our county commissioner, uh, to show up with his implacable dinosaur and, and he can be in the, the pet costume. Uh, we have a fall poetry contest that'll be at one P.M., one P.M. at Books and Brew. Uh, appreciate the support out of, uh, Ms. Jim and Stacy Stewart. Uh, the American Auxiliary and there are flyers for almost every one of these in the packet that run through with portable food vendors over at the auxiliary, the American Legion Post. Uh, and the Tip Top Jazzercise with the assistance of the Battle Creek Y N C A. That's happening every Wednesday evening. And when there's inclement weather, it's down at Pavilion. Uh, and there's a, a opportunity for lose your lockdown pounds, uh, with that program. And you're making a pretty good deal for the folks here if they won't participate in that. And I think I will ask Councilwoman Reed to talk about the Fall Festival and all of the things that she does plan for that, working with the Albion and the service.
Uh, Fall Festival is going to be the thirty-first of, uh, October. It's going to be at the Heist, at the Opportunity School parking lot. And if it should be raining or snowing, then it will be out to the, yeah, school, out to, uh, the Victory Park under the Pavilion. But we're going to have plenty of games going on, uh, and it's going to be by age group, uh, K one, two, three, four, five, and maybe even older. If they come, they'll prepare against each other. And we're just going to have games, uh, from three until five. And, uh, then we'll have gift bags that the kids can stick with them when they get ready to go. And we're saying to anyone who wants to, we've got a group that's, that a committee that's been working on this and getting it all organized. But we're also inviting people from the community, and this is a community thing, it's not a city thing. And we're asking people from the community if you would like to come, if you would like to help, uh, if you're, uh, running for office or something and you would just like to come and help because the parents and the kids will be there. And if you have some material that you would like to put on the table for people to take, you can. Uh, but we plan on having, uh, just a lot of fun. And so we're asking that you come. And we also have a whole funding page since this is not a city-run thing. It does not have financing. But we have ministerial association kicking in some money and some other people, uh, have been calling and, and turning in money. So if you would like to donate to this, uh, so we have gifts to buy and candy to buy and things of that sort, uh, you can give me a follow and I'd love to come get some or you can bring it to me or whatever. And also there's a go-funding page out there. What's the go-funding for the fall?
I don't know what you mean, go-funding pages.
It's an appreciated fall. I, I'll, I'll give the information. This is the fall first. And that was on the forty-third?
Yes.
I think you're what you said.
Yeah, Saturday, the thirty-first of October.
Saturday, the thirty-first. So big read until the body's fine. Thank you. Got it. Thank you. And if you want to help us out, call at two. We'll be standing up at two. I'll give you some one.
Okay, all right. Futures in, Donald. City Attorney.
I will be bringing a small modification to the city attorney contract that you mentioned.
And I know that Councilwoman Clark wants to discuss and settle the town hall meeting as the other members of the council.
Mayor Rojek, can we get an update on the progress of E D C, Chamber and D E A, um, and their, uh, adventure in looking at working together more closely?
Any other futures in, Donald? Okay. Bullock Donnas.
Uh, I currently don't have any hands up.
No?
No?
Yep.
Yep, well?
Yeah.
Brad.
Hello?
Oh, hi. I'm sorry. Uh, good evening, everyone. Victoria Garcia Snyder, seven eighteen Church Street. Um, I want to thank Pro Tem Williamson, um, for trying to get clarification on where the funds came from for that transcript. Um, but I don't think there was an answer to what the intent was to having it put into the agenda or what the outcome purpose was since it wasn't addressed. And I hope somebody could answer that.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Um, yeah. Uh, another part about the transcript, my name was used several times and Miss Foley several times, especially one particular part.
Correct. Could you read it?
All right. Is that better?
Better.
Okay. One part in particular that I had to apologize to Jody Brown about, and that was the part that said, Jody Brown said, "Tuck your tail feathers, motherfucker." Another protester actually said that. And Jody Brown was not mentioned. And I want to apologize to her again, um, because the transcript that Dave paid for mentioned me saying that and I never said that. And that is very embarrassing to me as an artist, as a person and as a man, to have to apologize to someone for something I absolutely did not say. So that's all I wanted to really get out there.
Dick, that's it for Bullock Donnas.
City Manager's Report. Um, just to remind everybody, Secretry will be held, uh, October thirty-first from eight P.M. or from six P.M. to eight P.M. Per receiving council resolution that adopted two thousand nineteen dash thirty-four. Uh, the North, the North Clark Street Project, uh, third partners meeting was held, uh, on October fourteenth. Uh, the information from that meeting is in your packet. Uh, Ms. Snyder would like to, uh, notify the council that she has selected Patrick Miller as our new director of public services. Uh, Mr. Miller was currently serving as a foreman in the city's wake-up treatment plant and officially began his role as the director today. Uh, speaking on mighty app, um, I'm glad to see Mr. Miller aboard and it's nice to see that we have a permanent director now for the first time in two years. Recreation Director Barry Wayans, Marshall Public Schools Superintendent Randy Davidson, uh, Haley Snyder about on October fifth to discuss the recreation program. Mary Rose Goldbacher. Um, programs will be held at the Marshall Public Schools, geared on opening the pool for water aerobics, uh, and ability to open to limited participation for participants. More detail planned and released, uh, from Recreation Department. And, uh, twenty twenty-one Wednesday study session will be held on Saturday, November fourteenth, uh, or Saturday, November twenty-first.
Good. Any questions? All City Manager Report. And I know that, uh, City Managers ask council to respond with their availability on those dates, so please do. Next, Mayor and Councilmember Donnas. Donnas and Councilmember. Uh, we have no absent council members, uh, but, uh, this goes, this, the Nego asked me to mention that on the thirty-first of October, that's Saturday, the clerk's office will- the clerk's office will be open from eight A M to four P M for absentee ballots, for absentee voters to.
What's that about? They can, they can draw them off.
Oh, okay.
Whatever they need to do with it.
Okay, so then again, that's the Saturday, the thirty-first of October, from eight A M to four P M for absentee voters, uh, city clerk's office will be open. Okay, they have motion to adjourn. Support. All those members say aye?
Aye.
We got both. We are adjourned.